...starting with six thirty. Public meeting with the meeting. Please stand for our opening exercise. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us safely here tonight. Allow us to return to our homes and our families in the same way which we got here. Please always be with us. Thank you for every blessing that goes on those. Please be with Commissioners, Holston, and help her. You know, with her help if she could be gathered in your name of grace. I pledge allegiance to God, who has been the St. Louis of America. And who we hold for rich and stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with no end, just for all. Are there any, um, anyone signing in? Oh, they're mine. We have information I could decide. In compliance with the freedom of information and notice of this meeting and agenda, were provided to all new committees here and persons with requests and information. Well, Paul. Commissioner Mark Prouse, yes. Commissioner Clifford, yes. Commissioner Grant, yes. Commissioner Lawson, yes. Commissioner Knowles, yes. Commissioner Holston. Commissioner Woolton, yes. Okay, we have number four ordinance amending use and rate ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero two to update definitions, operational processes, and rates. That's good, number three. Oh, well, the number sign in, anybody sign in or no one is strong with you. Four ordinance amending use and rate ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero two to update definitions, operational processes, and rates.
All right, so we have, uh, we've been through this at the only quarter committee level and the regular commission meeting last month of twenty seventh of September. I want to say, Yolanda Cocker and thanks to her comment for helping provide the updates and clearing up some issues. As well as our health form, legal team back here. So, uh, we have been through this extensively to see what, kind of bring some of our processes up to date with the new order use and rate ordinance. So, um, this is, uh, not second to rate whatsoever. That's what we voted on last spring. And then again, these are the procedural changes and changes to do.
I make a motion to accept ordinance amending use and rate ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero two. That is definitely. Send me advice for the full beginning discussion. Well, Paul, voting.
So this is the, this is the public hearing. So we can close the, uh, we can vote to close the public hearing. And then from there, we will vote during the void or a connection meeting.
All you go in here. Well, Paul, voting. Commissioner Mark Prouse, yes. Commissioner Clifford, yes. Commissioner Grant, yes. Commissioner Lawson, yes. Commissioner Knowles, yes. Commissioner Holston. Commissioner Woolton, yes. With the meeting and it was okay with y'all, um, since we literally missed the train and we are, but, um, I'm gonna postpone the opening exercise. And call the meeting to order for the regular commission meeting of October twenty-sixth. And the three and fifty-eight next week. In compliance with the freedom of information and notice of this meeting and agenda, were provided to all new committees here and persons with questions, specifications. Well, Paul. Commissioner Mark Prouse, yes. Commissioner Clifford, yes. Commissioner Grant, yes. Commissioner Lawson, yes. Commissioner Knowles, yes. Commissioner Holston. Commissioner Woolton, yes. All the oral written petitions, there are three minutes per speaker. If anyone has signed in or if anyone has anything to say, please sign with me. And otherwise, you will be started with this. If anyone who wants to speak in the audience who has not signed in, we are the speakers of the committee. Uh, the consent agenda for the regular meeting of December twenty seventh and the waiting committee meeting that was held on October eighteenth. That's what I'm saying. Um, I don't understand. And any discussions. Well, Paul, voting. Commissioner Mark Prouse, yes. Commissioner Clifford, yes. Commissioner Grant, yes. Commissioner Lawson, yes. Commissioner Knowles, yes. Commissioner Holston. Commissioner Woolton, yes. Number five ordinance amending use and rate ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero two to update definitions, operational processes, and rates. Second and final reading. I make a motion to accept the ordinance amending use and rate ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero two. What's the question? Well, Paul, voting. Commissioner Mark Prouse, yes. Commissioner Clifford, yes. Commissioner Grant, yes. Commissioner Lawson, yes. Commissioner Knowles, yes. Commissioner Holston. Commissioner Woolton, yes. What's your favorite part of the work? Number six ordinance rescinding the twenty nineteen dash zero three commission rules and procedures first reading.
All right, so I am very excited to announce this is very well be the last order.
Yes, I make a motion to accept it. Right. And then we're getting to the session with, um, Commissioner. I have the wrong problem with the sentence. And now we can get to talking about it as we're saying.
Sure, so this will be the last of the ordinance introduced, introduced. Uh, the future actions by the Commission will be concluded by resolution instead of the ordinance. But to repeal the ordinance as it states now, and then to introduce the ordinance, the ordinance and second reading will be a public hearing at six thirty next month or twenty, uh, second of November. And so we discussed this, uh, in detail at the fiscal year twenty-three. While it was passed by resolution, as well as future changes to the rate of use, it will be resolution instead of order. Um, all the, uh, all of this entails the commission and national bylaw in accordance with the district's enabling legislation act. Number four, I need to remember twenty-six point one. In second, by things about the powers of the district. The fourth power states the bylaws for management and regulation of this affair. So we went into this in the ways and means. And on last Monday, the eighteen, uh, twenty twenty-one. Basically, the framework of the proposed bylaws are the ordinance twenty nineteen oh three, the commission rules of procedure with all reference to ordinance from the language associated with the district's enabling legislation in the Bible in the beginning. And then there are sentences that define to use the district manager would add. So the proposed bylaws have been through multiple levels of review. And we're now preparing to discuss the rules, um, that are contained in there. There's thirty-two rules and there's seven, um, definitions in there. And so your package contains, as well as, as I said, on the left corner of the page, of all of the, um, how to provide feedback on those files. And so we'll get into this later. But basically, what we're trying to be able to do is compile all of the feedback and the proposed language from the Commissioners. Rule by rule within the bylaws and definitions, we compile that for me. There's a review overview and then be able to have another discussion where we fill all of the suggestions in there and find a little sort of this how to operate, this how it's functioning. And so we want to be able to have a discussion, um, where everybody gets a chance to be able to compete about stuff. And so to be able to facilitate that, run that through his, uh, Commissioners electronically or receive one handwrite document. If you can't read that language, if you propose as far as changes by noon next Monday, the first of November, that allows me to filter through team legal, compile all of that, get it through, so we know what we're discussing by rule. And once we know that, we can compare the practice to the review. All of that is being compiled by next Thursday, the fourth of November, so that we are able to put that packet together for the team, which is due Monday from today. So that's kind of the plan. What I'm asking for the Commissioners to be able to do is please, when you're providing feedback, make suggestions on the proposed language. If you kind of just say, reword this, or I don't like this, or I don't agree with this, that doesn't allow us to compile a full suggestion. So then we can get those through legal, compile all that and have a productive discussion on suggestions changes to the proposed bylaws. So, um, you have any questions about that? Please. Uh, that's why this is the first reading of the ordinance for sealing ordinance twenty nineteen zero zero three. It requires permission action first reading. We'll then have another, um, discussion on the bylaws to be able to put those on the twenty-second of November, where we would have second reading associated with rescinding the bylaws next in the agenda, next act, and then it would be enhancing the bylaws, approving the bylaws after we have the rest of the session.
So this gives the opportunity for all committees to refer many issues they may have with the rules. If you do choose to send them electronically, do not copy anybody other than Dave. They will be the filter to the attorney. Okay, so November first will be the deadline, so either, either hand carry them and mail them in to the district or we'll do it in electronic form on Tuesday, like I said, all these things are days. Um, and that way it's gotten written on itself and. I'm sorry, I'm just talking to the people. There's a big, like, argument. I understand that by November first, so, um, they can review them for any legal inconsistencies and, uh, maybe it's lost all of them on the eighth. I believe we're gonna be meeting again.
And you will have those compiled or just going to compile and house your packet on Thursday the fourth.
Yes, but I don't have gone through the rules of the procedure. And I must want to, you know, I am finally involved with, but I thought it was logged down. I have no. A lot of the working to rescind flat, you know, twenty nineteen dash zero three because the rules are being kind of, that's the one problem. And then by now, it's, um, coming to the couch.
And what is there already?
Well, we should have done that before. And we're coming. Yeah, so are we getting to? Yes, sir.
At this point, it's just not charged because there'd be a couple of, um, officially, um, there's a, um, there's a.
No, sir, we're not doing it that way. We want everybody to have an input. I don't want to get to the end of hand before I renew. So I respect that everybody on that committee. Um, this has been throughed by the rules of the tradition. And, um, we're definitely the way that the thing is. Well, Paul, voting. Commissioner Mark Prouse, yes. Commissioner Clifford, yes. Commissioner Grant, yes. Commissioner Lawson, yes. Commissioner Knowles, yes. Commissioner Holston. Commissioner Woolton, yes. Woolton says, man. Upsetting commission meeting schedule for the remainder of twenty twenty-one and all of twenty twenty-two.
So the Commissioners will know the only difference between the three different providers and the meeting schedule in your packet is the special meeting on Monday, beginning of November, that Tuesday, tonight, six thirty here, in town hall. Um, the package that was in detail required states that we're providing that feedback and then, um, we can receive that package for, uh, November, to have that meeting which we were doing, all this is just, um, for the upcoming commission meeting schedule as far as the access from the, from the.
And everybody, Mr. Palmer, or the, have the dates before you. Um, we got the December district management script.
On Monday, that's the major meeting. It'll be a special meeting. It's a, a regular meeting, uh, maybe. Yes, it'll, yeah, it'll be a special meeting dedicated to the bylaws.
What time is the meeting?
It's thirty. All right, so, um, there's always, you know, like, on our district, um, if you have questions, we've got them down and we'll get to them after, like, the food, the update to the entire commission. For the first topic is an update on COVID. Pandemic is the last regular commission meeting. Pfizer has officially asked the FDA to authorize COVID vaccines for these children ages five to eleven. But under emergency authorization, the FDA could approve the vaccine for children ages five to eleven within a couple of weeks. The FDA's independent advisory committee, their meeting schedule for tomorrow, the twenty-sixth, as well as the following meeting, which is next Tuesday, the second, and Wednesday, the third. They have advisory committee. So, um, within the next couple of weeks, they're supposed to be able to have, uh, children ages five to eleven approved for vaccines. Um, I'm happy to report that several who have received vaccine indicators have shown a downward trend over the last thirty days. And those are, uh, based on four components. One, we have a website, it's rate of cases. Again, statewide of one hundred thousand individuals. The rate of tests for one hundred thousand individuals. The percentage of positive cases. And then the death, um, by reports. So those are on a downward trend in no way. We have a list for the pandemic. There are plenty that is not vaccinated, please, we're prepared. The other, uh, another update is on Twitter. There's a Twitter forum hosted by James Island Five on Wednesday, the tenth of November, here, six p.m. at town hall. You can bring in suggestions and make solid solutions. There's a Twitter problem here on James Island, and I appreciate, um, Commissioner Lawson, here Clifford, depending the district's force. And final, twenty twenty-one, the Delta Highway coming up, and the last Saturday, the twenty-third. The next opportunity for, uh, Twitter pickup is gonna be next year, be the first quarter of twenty twenty-two. And then we get that Saturday at BDM, the fourth down. I will keep everybody posted on that. I wanted to kind of dive a little deeper. We'll do the financial report within your packet. I wanted to do a little bit on the revenues tonight. Um, we're now a quarter of the way through the year in the fiscal year twenty-two. So everybody's packet have a one-page rule of, as far as their financial. Um, so we are three months into fiscal year twenty-two. Um, and what you're seeing here is the year-to-year bonus threshold for revenue versus expenditure. So if you look at the general fund revenue, at a quarter of the way through the year, Commissioners would expect the district to have collected about twenty-five percent of the revenue thus far through quarters, three months, or a quarter of the way through the year. Unfortunately, that's not the case because the general fund revenues are still heavily dependent on the property tax collection. And so by now, most of the Commissioners would receive your property tax bill from Charleston County. And on this report, we'll see the Commissioners, uh, will note the district only collected one point six million of a projected ten point two million revenue. So that's less than sixteen percent of projected revenue. And that's far less than their twenty-five percent target. So this has to do with timing issues associated with the property taxes that are paid, um, to Charleston County and are distributed to the district. So when the property tax bill from the county, you will see there is a date of Tuesday, the eighteenth of January, twenty twenty-two. And that's when you can pay the amount on the bill without any fees or penalty. And then it'll show you several days after that the amount goes up. So it is my hope that as close as the month of January twenty twenty-two, when I'm reporting these revenue figures, the regular commission meeting of the twenty eighth of February twenty twenty-two, a little over four months from now, the district will be beginning a progress towards collecting that general fund revenue for fiscal year twenty-two. And the district Commissioners can also understand, this is why it's so important that, uh, we keep the housing fund balance in the general fund. And so basically, unfortunately, that's just the way this revenue is modeled. That is the case, seven and a half months from the start of the fiscal year, meaning July first of twenty twenty-two, to the middle of January, for the district's largest revenue source actively received from County, distributed to the district. With the other large chunk coming in is February and March, the pass matters to avoid, and it'll be the election record. So the Commissioners should know that the, the fund balance for the general fund is a cushion for fiscal year twenty-two operations and the services to deliver to the resident, to the resident, based on revenue collected from the previous fiscal year. And so that's why we're worrying the fact that it's still important for the district to maintain that housing fund balance within the general fund. The only factor that's boosting up the risk of general fund revenue year-to-date collected to that sixteen percent figure for fiscal year twenty-two is the sale of Old Fire Station number one, plus the sale of the point three acres on the folly road. So the net proceeds of those two sales provided, uh, of those properties represents one point three million of that one point six million collected. So if we didn't sell property, we would be far less revenue associated with the general fund year-to-date. So this is kind of the nominee. Right now, we have still a little collect, well, we have more collected than what we usually do due to the sale of those properties. But we have maybe three hundred thousand dollars in there without that. So we also know that our proprietary fund side, the weight part, part oh-two, does not have this type of timing issue. So if we'll go out monthly, we give those revenues monthly, more of an enterprise or a business fund. And so there's twelve people sites, so you'll see on the wastewater fund, that revenue has collected two million five hundred forty-five thousand. So a quarter of the way through the year, you, you, you know, pay twenty-five percent. And you'll see in there, we collected about twenty-eight percent of the waste water projected revenue through the first quarter of fiscal year twenty-two. So that's way above on target, a little bit better than twenty-five percent. So that's kind of how you see the comparison between the general fund revenue versus the proprietary fund revenue. So that's my, these guys on the monthly report here for the summary. I have received other, um, questions. So I, I, I sent the Commission email concerning the proposed redeployment from the fiscal year twenty-two budget resources back into the district staff. I did receive a question from the Commission concerning the number of district employees impacted by the proposed increased base wages. So the answer to the question is eighty-three impacted employees. So we just onboarded today a wastewater technician, started today. That's one of the open positions of the film. Since we met last time, we have onboarded two firefighter positions. So that's prompted us to leave three impacted employees associated with redeploying the, uh, fiscal year twenty-two resources. And that memo will kind of details the different positions in there that I sent out this afternoon. The number of positions is eighty-three, that would be. We have questions. I was also asked by the Commission about when did the Commission take action on the thousand dollar bonuses, um, last year? And that was, if you look at the, uh, meeting minutes for the twenty-sixth of October twenty-twenty, the first guy a year ago, he's reflected on number five of the meeting agenda. Do you have any questions about that? Thousand dollar bonus, that was a one time versus what is being proposed for the redeployment of resources. That would be, um, on the work of the legal team to put that in the work of the union format to bring to the commission on the twenty-second of November. So, um, we wanted to do that. As a way to move to maybe, you'll be getting more information within your packet next month associated with the redeployment of resources for fiscal year twenty-two. So that ends my report. If anybody got any questions.
I have, um, a couple of questions today. So the redeployment of the fund is to give the existing employees, not leadership or not upper management, a ten percent, right?
Right.
Now, um, how is it that any for, for retirees that you can give them, like, some type of maybe amount to help them and they now have to actually pay for their medical insurance?
So there's two types of categories. There's the twenty-sixth current retiree.
Correct.
There's twenty-sixth current retiree at the, at the funding level that we have in the trust. There's, that should last for twenty months paying for two to three years at a current service level. And so the redeployment of the resources into the district staff helps twenty-eight impacted employees that would be fever retiring. We're trying to be put borrowing sources back in that path.
I just have everything to know. So the reason for that is saying, I thought you said four hundred thousand. Is that a question at all?
Yes.
That would be paying to be helping with the union. Or to, for, for other requirements planned, not that I'm involving you. I mean, why do you have, why is the talking to three thousand, four hundred thousand? And I know it's to be better than one thousand, you know, you have, it's a budget. Just that one.
Sure, so the cross fund that under established for whole tax. It's through S B for the.
And you're gonna give it back to us because you're, um, you're all in the budget.
No, so fiscal year twenty-two is the first year that the district's actually budgeted any money to go into that fund. So that, in fiscal year twenty-two, there was two hundred and seventy thousand dollars going to go into that fund, which is based on the pay debt for the actual yearly determined employer contribution. Prior to this budget year, the district has never planned to actually put that money in. So the district won't put that money in because we've dissolved our participation duty has to order. And instead, we will use that four hundred and eighty thousand dollars in that trust to be able to pay for the twenty years of the current, the twenty-sixth current retiree. to be able to pay for the premium of the current, the twenty-sixth current retiree for two to three years. The twenty-sixth, um, current retiree will not see a change in benefit level until that fund is exhausted. A hundred and thirty thousand dollars of employer contribution to those premiums, that, that represents a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We no longer make those employee premiums, those payments for employee premiums. We're not participating in COVID anymore. And so if you take that two hundred and seventy thousand in A debt, a hundred and thirty thousand in retiree premiums, that's how you get four hundred thousand dollars. Which is about sixty-eight dollars towards a four hundred thousand dollars, or one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. And so that is the amount of money deployed back into current frontline staff. And so that initiative is based on remaining competitive within the labor market, as well as retaining current staff. And so the ability to re-recruit our current employees is very important before employees with T P L, destruction field, or options are recruited out of the organization. So that is the effort to be able to re-up that money from COVID, reinvest that back in frontline employees where we're experiencing a part of, a part of the, the group practice.
That's the conclusion of your report, sir?
That's the conclusion of my report.
Um, and the packet's your work from four departments and newspaper articles, um, dealing with the James Island district. And we were also presented, and I really wanted to remember the commission, the, at the end of the bar, the new leader, and it really, it, are you ready there? That was, um, I was, I was, you know, what I was.
Who can suggest a candidate for new organization? I sometimes wonder if you ever do a guy else.
Last thing I, I, I think, and do you have anything else to add to this, this, or any? Um, are there any oral written, they think they've been submitted, submitted for the end, is anybody sign up?
Well, I'll start, uh, remember I remember the, uh, meeting, meeting committee meeting. We've been there, that, that was, we, it was October, we had, uh, Warren Flynn present, we had Bob Ford present. We also had, uh, Bob Dameron, some of the community advisors giving an overview of the basic title layer that we'll be planning to incorporate into the fiscal year forty three budget. More information, the second and the third, meeting committee meeting for fiscal year twenty three, that's scheduled for the fourteenth of February, and the fourteenth of March, or we will go. Operating budgets on top of the capital layer, and hopefully March, the April budget document to be available.
Um, did anybody else sign up for the oral written, here, session? All right, number twelve, the executive session, but, um, I'm making notes, but we don't have a, a question, I do have a question. Um, and. Okay, oh, sure. Oh, yeah, I'm making a motion to enter into the executive session. And that is for the perfect agreement for tax map sheet number four two five dash one two zero dash zero one eight five, and four two five dash one two zero dash zero two nine eight, as well as the ordinance for the sale of tax map sheet number four two five dash one two zero dash zero one eight five, and four two five one two zero dash zero two nine eight. Well, thank you. Commissioner Brown, yes. Commissioner Corcoran?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Melvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Corcoran?
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry, yes. So, we will let y'all know when, um, and what's going on, y'all like to move, anyway.
Here.
I'm gonna start with y'all.
You are bored with me. You are bored with me.
All right, we just came out of executive session, and, um, as we said, the perfect agreement for tax map sheet number four two five dash one two zero dash zero one eight five, and four two five dash one two zero zero two nine eight. And, um, well, I can take it in the executive space. Item thirteen is the perfect agreement for tax map sheet number four two five dash one two zero dash zero one eight five, and four two five dash twenty year, zero two nine eight. Is, um, is there a way to combine that, if it, what's it?
I don't know.
Okay, so.